Judge Charles here. Commissioner Schimmel.
Here.
Commissioner Hummel.
Here.
Carol Sweets with the county clerk's office. Please stand and join us in opening prayer as we begin the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, please take care of our military wherever they may be. Please take care of their family. Please bring them home safely back to us. And thank you for the rain that you brought as we needed it. And help us make the best decisions for the county. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got our guys from Marathon here, which is going to be number six. Does anybody have anything to say about Marathon before we move that way? Is that Jeffrey? Come on through there, Jeffrey. I just saw him here. Okay. No, I was making sure it was you, not me. So, huh? I just saw him here. Number six on the agenda is to accept a $25,000 donation for Marathon Home Company, represented by Hugo Gutierrez for DPS Hotel Accommodations. It's me. What we had on there is, I don't know if you guys remember, we were going to start the DPS fund to get hotel rooms for these guys to be able to stay a night. And Hugo and Jody, I don't remember your last name.
Callahan.
And Jody Callahan are here on behalf of Marathon to present that check. I have the real one for you right here, Lawanna. And Hugo has a blown up one he'd like to present us. You can bring it up here.
Oh, okay.
Sit down and give a picture.
Hey, how you doing, sir? Is it all right?
Good to see you, yeah.
Yeah, how's it going, sir?
Commissioner, how are you?
Good.
Nice to see you. Nice to meet you. How are you? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. How do we do this? How about we do it, uh, how do we do this, like this? Jody, will you get in here? Commissioner, come on.
I'll try to fit in here somewhere.
We just fit in here? How do we do this?
That's looking good.
Come on, James.
All right. There you go. That looks great. Okay, here we go. Let's take two pictures.
I do have one, but you're kind of short.
Can we go one, two, three?
Tracy, it's your mug shot. It's a good picture.
One more?
Terrible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Take care. Gotta take care of them.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I don't want any. Okay, and before we go to the budget workshop, why don't we do everything else that's on here? Because that's going to take the longest.
Sounds great.
That we will finish when we're done and we get the budget workshop. Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number one, uh, number nine, let's go to that one real quick. It's to discuss, approve, disapprove, the request for contract modification to contract number DJB-1PC004 and its positions of coverage. Allow me to execute the letter. And Carol, I have a copy of the note, I believe, I just haven't brought it in here. This is one of those GEO things. The way we made the agreement is every modification has to come through us. And what it is, if they have positions of coverage and they're looking to change how they do their positions of coverage, we can stop them actually if we wanted to.
All we need is a motion, right?
Right.
I'll make the motion to approve request for contract modification, contract number DJB-1PC004, position of coverage. If approved, allow by, uh, law county judge to execute.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? None. Motion carries four zero. Number 10 is to discuss, approve, disapprove, the cost implication for modifications for the requirement of the Prison Rate Elimination Act 2003 and request for the contract modification number EROIGSA-11-0004. And allow me to approve, if approved, that's another GEO thing.
I make the motion to approve qualification for modification for the requirement of the Prison Rate Elimination Act of 2003, request for contract modification EROIGSA-11-0004, allowing county judge to execute.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? None. Motion carries four zero. This puts us back to number seven, which is discuss, approve, disapprove, establishing the tentative abnormal tax rate for the purpose of calculating the potential revenues for fiscal year 2013, county budget. And that's under Lawanna.
This was discussed at the last commissioner's court meeting after the presentation by Sue Butler Carter and Marvin Beatrix. And in order to end...
Did those Marathon guys leave?
I'm sure they did.
Because something else came up about that, that they were going to answer first, about that $20,000 roadway permit. They said, "We don't have an agreement for that." That driveway permit that was also brought up. I'm sorry. They're going to clarify that. Go ahead. They came in early to talk about that.
Anyway, to be able to calculate anticipated revenues, y'all need to estimate...
Bye. Bye. They're going to send me a letter.
The tax rate for fiscal year 2013. As it calculated and was presented in the paper on August 15th, it has to be the lower of the effective tax rate or the rollback tax rate. And the lower in this particular case is the rollback at .2943 due to our increased sales tax revenues.
What was last year's?
.4269.
Still do that right hand? How much you get? I think you have to watch your board. We've got a lot more than ten. We've got more churches. We've got a lot more people praying. We're on at number seven, Mr. Butler. About to...
Tax rate.
Y'all ready? Giving your opinion?
No.
Does anybody sign up to speak about it?
There's no public comment.
Unless you recognize it. If you recognize that, then you make your motion. But there's no public comment.
What?
Are we going to allow anybody to speak over the room, sir?
Who were we? Did somebody want to say something? Is that where we were? I missed it.
No.
I do.
Sue, you did? What did you want to say, Sue?
I have some rava sheets.
Okay, you want to bring those up? We'll look at them.
Because, uh, Lawanna was explaining, I don't see it exactly the same way. Because there is an option of keeping last year's tax rate without having to go to the effective or the rollback rate. And I think it's very important that as commissioners and the judge, you understand that we are not attached immediately to that low rollback rate. If you look at this trend line...
Lawanna, will you do an instant replay? What did you say? I'm sorry.
Who's taping it? Replay it for us. Verbatim.
There's only 17 of those out there. Can you help me?
The tax rate as calculated and as published in the newspaper calculates at the rollback tax rate of 2943 and the effective tax rate of .4311. The way the law reads is you must go with the lower of the two, which is the rollback because of our increased sales tax valuation. Sue is going to explain to you option number three that, anyway, she can explain.
Well, the law doesn't exactly say that you have to go with the rollback rate. But if you don't go with the rollback rate or the lowest of the two, the voters have an option of signing a petition and requesting a rollback election. That is, they have to get, in our case, I think, about 700 signatures. And then they can say, "We want to have an election," and this gives the voters some input into the process of establishing a tax rate. But in our particular case, what we've done every year for the past 10 or 12 that I can look at is we have immediately assigned the tax rate, the low rollback rate, without giving any thought to having a higher rate. And I think we kind of resemble that car, the getaway car in California, where you're just throwing money out the window. Because whenever you feel like it's a law that you have to use that lower rate and you don't do analysis and consider using a slightly higher rate, you are really losing millions of dollars for our county. If you look back to 2007, we had a .8241 tax rate. If we go down to .2943 using the rollback rate, that's a 68 percent decrease. And I can assure you, our appraisals have not gone up anywhere near that. And people are paying less taxes. This year, our base, which is what we would have if all of the oil companies were gone, we'd be collecting like just over 1 million. And in the past, you can see, we've collected 3 million, 3 million, 3 million, 3 million. Now we are collecting from our, uh, our base taxpayers just over 1 million dollars. And they are paying less taxes, and they have been paying less taxes since 2007. So what I'm saying is, if anyone were to look at this trend of tax reductions, 2008, 17 percent down, 2009, 9 percent down, 2010, it's almost a 20 percent decrease, and we only collected 2.81 million. We really lost millions of dollars that year by accepting a 20 percent decrease. And then 14 percent, and now on top of all that, we're going to decrease it 31 percent. So what I'm proposing, and there is a law that, or at least it's written in the Truth and Taxation booklet, which I think I left here.
I put your copy of that, Truth and Taxation, page 11, I think.
Now, this is what...
I was wrong, I did.
This is what I read in the Truth and Taxation, is that if a tax rate is not officially set in a meeting prior to September 30th, then by default, the tax rate goes to the previous year. So my question to you, and then you have access to your attorneys here, your two county attorneys here in Corin City, and then you have your San Antonio attorneys, and you have Bob Henderson, is if we still have this option of defaulting to last year's tax rate, why not go ahead in lieu of how much we've already decreased it, keep the tax rate the same for one more year, get an additional 4.1 million dollars, which is more than we've, you know, collected ever until 2011? That's how much more we'll get. Because we need, as you all know, what our financial requirements are and how, and how much it's going to increase due to all this traffic. So I just think regardless of what happens, you know, from here on out, we need to take advantage of where we are now. This chart shows that the minerals, our oil companies are 74 percent of that 3 billion base. So when we apply a tax rate to that, most of this money, most of the 13, 14 million dollars, it comes from the oil companies. And so we're losing this tremendous opportunity to get more money to do what we need to for our county by just assuming that we have to go to the rollback rate. We are not by law tied to that rollback rate, and we shouldn't have this fear of a rollback election. And even if it came to a rollback election, I think the voters would support keeping a minimal tax rate and collecting a great deal of additional money from the oil companies. So I would like for y'all to consider that and also talk to your legal representatives. Realize that if we don't keep our existing rollback rate, we are, and this isn't an estimate, this is based on the appraised values that we have as today, we're giving up 4 million dollars. That's just this year. And over a projected number of years, and it actually would take us six years increasing the max 8 percent every single year to ever get back up to .42. I thought 10, but we can do it in six. But you've got to increase it the max every single year to get back up there. And every year that you're down, you're losing money. We're throwing it out the window when we could be collecting it from the oil companies while they're here. Okay, thank y'all for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Two things, as far as the six years to get back up to the 4269, that's assuming valuations stay the same as they are right now. Your valuations could change it, so it may take longer, it may take less.
Right.
Second thing is, not only are the oil and gas companies here and part of that 74 percent of the valuation, but there are taxpayers in Corin's County that also have mineral interests that they are paying on that mineral interest. That 74 percent isn't all just the oil and gas companies. There are taxpayers that have benefited in the form of...
That's right.
Thank you.
Most of that, I would say 80 percent of that 74 percent is oil companies. And then the 20 percent would be the mineral rights that are paid for by the taxpayers. So that's true. Okay, thank you.
Let me ask this question. All right, if we've got 3 billion dollars, okay, and you want to leave 12 more cents in there, how many dollars is that that the county would collect?
What do you mean, 12 more cents?
Well, you say you want to leave it at 43 instead of going to 29, that's 12 cents, isn't it?
Uh-huh.
All right, that's about 7 million dollars in taxes more collected, right?
I say at, um, at the .2493 rate times 3 billion, we'll collect 9 million. We'll only collect 9 million.
All right.
And then at .4269, we'll collect 13 million.
So it's only 4 million?
Only 4 million.
4 million more.
Difference, uh-huh.
I think you said 4.
Well, it's 4.16 million. But that's more than we've ever collected in a whole year before.
I know it is. So we're going to collect 4 million rather more taxes, and then are we going to save that 4 million dollars for when it crashes?
That, Pete, will be up to you all to decide what to do with this money once we decide to collect it and not just throw it out the window. And that's going to take planning. What you want to do is spend the money wisely, you want to save it wisely. I'm not saying spend it all, but you want to appropriate it wisely. Save as much as you need to feel comfortable and safe for the year, but spend it on the EMS and on the, on the roads and on the infrastructure and on the things we can do to help the county. I know you want to help the taxpayers, but by lowering their bill a little bit, you know, it will help them some. But we can take this money from the oil companies and from the mineral owners, and we can do things that really help our citizens and bring our county up and, you know, provide these, the infrastructure and, you know, we'll have the money to do things. We don't have to stay poor forever. And if you look at this tax rate, it looks like Corin's County just, you know, they're just, we're leaving money on the table, and I just feel like the taxpayers have received a good break from 2000. And I'm a taxpayer. You know, it's not like I'm talking about somebody else. I know that this, these tax rates are going down, and we want to benefit everyone, but these taxpayers have benefited from this, and it's already gone down 68 percent. 14 percent last year. So I just, looking at just this year, we have 4 million at stake, and I've seen, I know you're very conscious of money and how it's spent, and I've seen you sweat bullets over a $2,000 expenditure. And now we can take some steps and get an extra 4 million to take care of all these things we want to do. There's 4 million dollars on the table right here with your decision. And that's for just this year. And if you prorate it over the next five or six years, you can be talking about affecting the county finances by, what, 25 million dollars on a cumulative basis. We don't know what each year's going to bring, but it could have that much of an effect. And then, and that's in a positive case, like the Eagle Ford continues to grow, which I expect it to. But then you also have to be concerned about what happens if it doesn't. And then you don't have 3 billion to multiply the rate by. And you try multiplying a rate of .29 times 1 billion, and you only get 2.9 million, and that's lower than we've ever had before. So we have some things that we know and some things that could or could not happen. But what we know today is that you can get an extra 4 million by keeping last year's tax rate, which is already significantly lower than it has been over the years. And I, I realize that there's issues to be dealt with. You need to talk to your lawyers. You have lawyers in San Antonio, you have two county attorneys. You can talk to the Truth and Taxation people and find out how to get it done. So if you want to get it done, like I said, when I read that taxation book, it says if you don't add by September 30th, it defaults the last year's rate. So that seemed like a pretty good option to me.
Sue, I got, I got one question for you. I know that you can only go up 8 percent a year, but if we adjusted it at .42, is there any law that says you can only go down so much, or could we fall back to whatever we wanted to?
It could go zero.
You can, you can go down as much as you want, but you can only go up 8 percent per year.
We are, and even that 8 percent, we could go higher than that, but you have to have a rollback election. And again, I think we need to get rid of that fear for rollback election. And we're headed to a zero property tax rate. At this, if we continue to latch on to that low rate, we are headed to zero, which, as some people remember, is what happened with the uranium mines, and then we came out of it without any saved money and a low tax rate, and we had to fight back. So I don't really see that getting to that point. But if we continue to just latch on to that rollback rate, it will go down, lower and lower, and we'll continue to lose millions. You can see how much we've lost over, you know, these last four or five years, and it's not like we don't need it. I do not believe we have spent any money previously here. You know, we have things that we really need, and y'all know that much better than I do. So...
I don't know if everybody feels the way I feel, but being a taxpayer, I don't mind paying my fair share of tax, but I would like a good jail, a good hospital, good roads. As long as I'm getting something for my money, I don't, I don't mind at all paying. But, you know, we're at the crossroads here, where you have, have a really good opportunity to kind of build the county up and give the taxpayers something for their money. Now, right now, I mean, in years past, pay a good amount of tax, and we have an old jail and, you know, old falling down courthouse. And now we're starting to build, and we've got some momentum, it's like a...
Exactly. Which, and this is where it comes to, it's y'all's decision how to allocate the money that comes in. But when it comes time for election, you want to be able to list the things you've done with the money. You know, you, you want to have some accomplishments and some, you know, projects that are completed so you can say, "Yes, we've done this, this, and this, and we've benefited these people, and we're proud of what we've done, and we still have this much money to pay." I don't think you want to say, "We gave away 4 million dollars." And then we're going to, you know, try to make it, you know, from here on out. But I just, please take all that into consideration, okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Morris.
I'd like to second what, uh, just Sue said. I think it's, would be foolish on our behalf as a county to roll back to a lesser rate. If this oil boom could continue for the next 20 years, it could go upside down in the next six months. But we could take that extra 4 million dollars, put it in a unencumbered account, and call it our rainy day fund and use it to our advantage. But to leave 4 million dollars on the table, I think would be foolish on part of the county. And it would be wise, I believe, to take Sue's advice and her recommendation.
Yes, Sheriff.
It's wonderful to be on the court when you can lower the taxes. And I know as a citizen, we always appreciate when we get our taxes lowered. But again, we're in a situation that we've never been in before. You know, we've never had this opportunity to grow at the rate that we can. And I was trying to figure out, what would 8 percent, if we increased it, you know, there's going to come a time that we can't stay at 29 cents. You know, we used to sit at, what, 70 something? I don't know, but, and I haven't even looked at the figures. But there's going to come a time for probably in my lifetime that we won't be able to sit at 29 cents. So have we projected how long it will take us to get to a tax rate that would support the raises that we desperately needed? You know, our, our people needed raises so badly at the, at the county level. And if we, if we continue to lower our tax rate and we're not looking at what would happen if that tax sales revenue and all the, um, oil boom shut down on us, would we be able to sustain what we've already put in place in the motion to continue over the years? Because not only have we given well-deserved raises that need to stay there, but we're also going to have to give cost of living raises over the next few years. And I'm not for sure, I don't have anything in front of me, but I think 8 percent, if we go down to 29 cents, I think 8 percent next year, when we have to start increasing, it would be like 31 or 32 cents. So it would take us, you know, that's the situation we could be in. And at any given time, the economy or our federal government could, you know, know in, um, in the United States drilling for some reason. Things could shut down on us. So just be cautious of that, you know? We love tax decreases, and we appreciate the years that y'all have given us that, but we also have an opportunity. And maybe in the next year, we can look at it again, and the next year, you know, each year we could go down a small amount, but to go down, did you say 31 percent this year?
31 percent?
This year, that's a huge decrease. And I'm listening, I'm hearing some different things, and I'm assuming that we don't have time to really, we're under the gun, and we don't have time to really do the steps that we needed in order to, to drop it to anything other than 29 cents. But, you know, there's just some things that I know that y'all are very, that y'all care about. And of course, we don't want to get stuck in a situation five years down the road that we can't increase that tax rate. And I've seen it happen in other entities, where they were so proud of lowering their tax rate, and then when the bottom fell out, it was a much, um, they were in a worse shape than they ever thought they would be. They hadn't been collecting that extra money for the rainy day funds, and they were also at such a low tax rate that then they couldn't sustain what they had put in, in motion in the years before. Thank you.
Sheriff, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
I asked Kennedy, what did y'all do with the city?
Uh, we are, well, we haven't, we haven't done that yet. We'll vote, but what we were discussing is, we will, well, I can't say, because we haven't voted yet. So, yeah, we had our workshops, and, and we were leaning towards not...
Looking around.
Yeah. We were leaning towards, we'll do that tomorrow night. But again, we see the benefit of, of taking that extra money. Um, you know, the, the values have gone up. We're not increasing the tax rate. The tax rate stays the same. A lot of people say, "Oh, you're increasing our taxes." Well, there's variables in there, and your, your values have gone up. And we understand that there's a lot of people with mineral rights also, and they're, they're having, they're... But again, we see the benefit of of taking that extra money. You know, the the values have gone up. We're not increasing the tax rate. The tax rate stays the same. A lot of people say, oh, you're increasing our taxes. Well, there's variables in there and your your values have gone up. And we understand that there's a lot of people with mineral rights also and they're they're having, they're hitting a lot of the taxes on them. But of course, that's new money. That's not what they were sitting at three and four and five years ago. They didn't have that money. So the money that's being taxed is new revenue that that they're paying taxes off of. But I I was looking at Victoria County. Victoria County kept theirs the same. You know, they didn't lower theirs, but they talked about the values going up. So but tomorrow night, we'll make that decision. So I'm sorry I couldn't answer you, that's okay.
I'm curious as to how much of a tax rate we're going to have to have to meet our budget requirement for this year, this this year. I mean, maybe the twenty-one cents or twenty-nine cents, that may not even be enough to furnish our budget for this year.
Yes, it is.
Well, I I was saying that, but that should be determined before we actually can decide what your rates, what the rates may be. And when you go back to the rollback, certainly it's safer. They still give you the discount, the discount on the taxes, so.
Well, that estimated, the estimated ending unencumbered fund balance, September thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, using the point two nine four three, just for the general fund by itself, will be eleven plus million dollars, where normally we set between a three and four million dollar.
That's that's a point that really needs to be taken because that's a, it's a point that people will look at. Because we've been on a high tax rate, they're going to look at this and see, have you really treated us fair, or not us, but them fair? And I think it's more political fodder than it is anything else, but you still have to make your payments. We have to know what you've got to put out to make the budget for this year and then to see how they compare to the rollback rate. They're going to have a little bit of better information and you can still give the tax rate break and keep them all happier. They're they're not real happy right now.
Well, Carl, Carl has spoken his opinion on it. My opinion on it, you know, tells it around back and forth and I know we're at a deadline right now, but what Sue was saying right there could be nine million at the point two nine four three, it'd be thirteen million at the point four two six nine. Be around four million dollars and Sue said it was like twenty percent of the citizens out of that seventy-four percent that would be paying out of the, from the oil right revenue that they're getting. Okay, so there would be like eight hundred thousand dollars out of the whole county that the citizens would be paying. And the oil companies would be paying like three point two million for the out of those four million if it stays the same. All right, something like that. Right? So, I mean, I understand that it's eight hundred thousand dollars more for the citizens, but that's kind of a split. It's it's split between, I don't know, the percentage of people that are that are to be split in, but it probably won't be that dramatic, you know, of like of taxing on them. And we can get three point two million from the oil companies more and maybe, I don't know, we could use it for a rainy day fund or not, but use it for something where we could be capitalizing on three point two million, no, four million actually. But the citizens would be benefiting more, better roads, better, we'd like, call it a courthouse, jail. So. And there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot of reasons that I would just probably just keep it the same because of that four million dollars would benefit us in the long run.
I tend to agree with that. Of course, I talked last year with Sue about it, about she talked about how low would you like to see the rate go? We talked about it may go down to thirteen percent. And I said, well, it ought to stay at least twenty percent. We shouldn't let it go that long. So I talked about this last year, but as has been stated, we're too late to get this done this year to put it somewhere as in between. I want it to go somewhere as in between. Keep it at the forty-three cents, or maybe halfway in between that, keep it some more. I would be in favor of this if we take this four million and we set it in a reserve fund somewhere. Definitely have to set it aside somewhere for, because I've heard the stories of these people in West Texas where the crash came and it went down and they could not get their money. The schools had a hard time operating, especially the school.
I agree with that. Because you don't know what's going to happen with the oil companies after the election in November. Someone else gets back in there, this thing will die of nothing. So we better stay with what we got for now. That's my opinion.
I agree with y'all. The only part I don't like about this is we have this in the paper August fifteenth and we waited this long to bring it to the table. And when you wait this long to bring something to the table, while everybody in this room might agree, we appear deceptive to the general public, whether it's a political move or a non-political move, you appear deceptive by not giving them that option of that rollback election that they are entitled to. Even if nobody, let me finish my sentence, even if nobody thinks we would have got seven hundred and fifty signatures, even if nobody thinks that, or regardless of how we feel, we should have done the right thing. And by defaulting, we are taking the coward's way out and just defaulting on our own taxes. And I just, I think that's an odd thing to do. I just think it's kind of deceptive to say I'm going to default versus giving you the choice that you actually deserve.
I I was looking again in the truth and taxation book. And after we set or if we default to the tax rate of point four two three nine, say this last year, the citizens still have an opportunity to file a rollback election. So.
Do they want it?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
And that's one of, that's one of the things that's only one, my only concern is I think that that we want to have the numbers published earlier than that on August fifteenth because today's September seventeenth.
Brenda published the numbers.
I'm sorry. I know one of y'all did.
But you can't, you can't look at that publication and tell what it's going to be. Because it says the effective rate is this and the rollback rate is this, but how do you know what's going to be selected?
Well, based on the calculation, you have to go with the lower of the two unless you default and don't make a choice.
No, you don't have to go. When you look at what's in the paper, you can't really know what the rate's going to be. You know what the effective rate is and you know what the rollback rate is, but you don't know what rate the commissioners are going to vote on. So it's not until they vote that you even can start a rollback election because it's still up in the air. It is, it's not a given that you go with the rollback rate. So theoretically, the citizens do not know what that rate is. The rate hasn't been published in the paper. The only thing that's published is the rollback rate and the effective rate. They do not know what our rate is going to be until y'all set it. So it's my understanding that they would not even start a rollback petition until you all officially set a rate.
And if they default, there won't be an official action, so there couldn't be a rollback election.
But I think you still have to have a meeting where you set the default rate.
No, you cannot. It is default.
And when you default, that just goes to show you weren't taking care of business by getting on top of this in time. A default's a default. I don't care what bank you go to, you default, it means you didn't take care of your business on time.
It's not, I, well, I think, I think the option of a rollback election may still be on.
No, it's not, it is not, because there's no rate set if they default.
And so, what, Maurice?
I think the coward's way out is not taking any action at all.
And that's a default.
Because the commissioner's court failed to take action in a tiny fashion. And the commissioner's court should admit to that and maintain the tax rate as it is today. But the coward's way out is to let it go without admission. There's nothing wrong with making a mistake. There's nothing wrong with being behind the power curve. But the greatest insult that you can make to this community is to not admit that. Just admit the mistake, hold it as it is, and move on. Because the real coward's way out is to do exactly what you're doing.
Well, Lwana came to us and told us what the tax rate is and nobody had a problem with it until Sue prepared something and then it was too late. This is something that should have started back on this publication date. And if we would have started back on this publication date, we wouldn't be sitting where we're sitting. When Lwana comes to us and tells us we have the money to meet our needs and we are doing the right thing, we don't make a mistake when somebody tells us we're doing the right thing. I don't believe that. I don't think Lwana deceived us and I don't think we deceived anybody else. I think Lwana came to us and told us, hey, we're okay. And we said, okay, we're okay. Did any of y'all see that any differently until Sue brought this up at the last meeting? And you bring something up this late, well, then Sue decided, but when Lwana is telling us we're okay, I'm going to think as our auditor and the keeper of our finances, I believe.
Well, our financial advisor, Mr. Henderson, I believe, and is in the article in the newspaper, recommended that we do not do a rollback. And for a private citizen, really, to be ahead of the commissioner's court. I mean, the commission court, it should be the reverse. Where the commission court, if one commissioner is responsible to to watch our tax rates in a minute before the commissioner's court, before we get behind the power curve. And not leaving strictly up to Lwana and for Brenda. I mean, this is a shared responsibility for the commissioner's court. You are the ones that that decide what we do with our tax money. And the commission court should be ahead of this and should be on top of this all year long.
Mr. Henderson did say in his presentation that as a court, you did not have to go back to the rollback rate. And at that time, Lwana said it was point two three. And Mr. Henderson said, do not take it back. It was estimated at point two three. He said, do not take it back to that low. He said, use another figure like point three oh. And Mr. Henderson said this at a meeting that I wasn't able to attend. But his point was, don't go all the way back to the rollback rate. So he was encouraging y'all at that time to consider going higher than the rollback rate.
And again, if action would have been taken early enough where the postings could have been done and the public hearings held so the taxpayers had some input in this, but by the court taking no action and defaulting back to last year's tax rate by failure to act, I don't think it looks really good to the taxpayers that y'all aren't doing something in your positions. You could have done something differently if this whole process would have been started earlier and there could have been the correct postings. We could have gone between the point two nine four three and the point four three eleven and risk a rollback election.
But but when you and I talked, you were okay by the point two nine, you and I had a discussion about complaining about their taxes and complaining about not having money for medicine. What was a conversation you and I had? And I said, how do you feel about the point two nine?
The point two nine four three will adequately sustain the anticipated budget for this year as well as increase our revenues.
Was, let's give everybody a one-year break. You said, you know, what would you think? And you and I sit there and we literally beat this to death for about thirty minutes. Well, what would you think? And then we played roles for a second and I called Bob. And you said, you know, a one-year break would not kill us as much as, you know, that they suffered. We could take it up year after year after year, which would be, you know, point, one point oh eight, times it by one point oh eight and go up. I think if we decided it could take us, maybe we didn't, I don't remember what we decided.
Well, it all depends on evaluations.
And you said, we, we kind of, Lwana and I kind of agreed it was fair. We didn't see a reason. We published it in the paper, Brenda published it in the paper. And then now all of a sudden, it's like, this is new news to everybody. That's not, that's not our fault.
It's not, it wasn't published in the paper which rate Brenda used. There's two separate rates that could be available. And you are hearing from the public, you have citizens to be heard here. Where are your citizens that are opposed to this? And, you know, I feel like by using a rate, I feel like y'all are taking action. You're not defaulting on your responsibility. You've looked at it, you realize that there's variables and you're making a decision to keep last year's tax rate by not going with the lower rollback rate. That is a decision. You're not.
Y'all can't decide that. If you make that, there's no way to make that decision. That has to be a default action. By the court making no decision, it'll drop back to last year's tax rate, not drop, go back to last year's tax rate. There can be no decision made. That would have to be by default.
But you can decide to default.
You can decide not to do anything, which puts it in the context of what you're doing.
But you can't say you're deciding to use last year's tax rate. But you also have to remember, just because taxes are assessed, doesn't mean that they'll be collected. We have been very fortunate to have great collection rates.
I'd like to also, a little longer, I'm sorry, but a company was going to hire some people and they asked their personnel officer to interview three different people. First one came in, the first person came in, the interviewer said, well, it's two of two. And the guy was a mathematician. He said, I don't know, but somewhere between four, two and three, five. Next one came in, he was a school teacher and they asked him the same question. He said, I don't know. But it's somewhere between four, two, four, five, somewhere in there and a little bit under three. The third interviewee was a lawyer. He was asked the same question and he looked, the lawyer looked around and said, what do you want it to be? And so what happens is if I go see a lawyer or you go see a lawyer, the first thing he'll ask you, what do you want? And then you go into the books and he can probably find a number of cases to give his client the right to vote, come back with a rollback. What I'm saying is, why take the chance? Does that make any sense?
No.
I didn't think so.
Sometimes you have to take a chance. You feel like you're doing the right thing.
Well, I I'm, I think now, I've always thought that our job as commissioners and judges is to act in the best interest of the county and what is best for the county and the citizens of the county. Now, you may be doing a great service if you drop it back, but if you don't fix the roads and you don't fix your buildings and you don't have an infrastructure, you haven't really done anything. I think the best interest of the citizens and and a good cross-section of them are right here telling you, you know, default, I don't really like that word. Now, if that's what it is, I I think Bob could probably come up with a better term than that.
Well, that's what it says in the truth and taxation.
But you can justify why you're default.
If what is in the best interest of the county is collecting four point one million dollars more next year with this, keeping the rate the same, by any means that you can keep that rate the same, that's the way you do it. And if that's the only way you can do it, then that's probably what you ought to do.
It seems to me the best thing to do for this county would be to try to get them to have a little more respect for the commissioner's court. They don't have it now. They don't have any elected officials here. And the only way you're going to get that done is to show that you're up here trying to do things that they can see, feel and smell of. But do whatever you want. It's their way to happen, just whatever you want.
As far as I can tell, we don't have a new jail and we don't have a restored courthouse and we don't have all our roads paved. And the only way we're ever going to get all these things done is to collect more money. And if you can't collect it now, you just wait. If everything goes to down the tubes, you're not going to look real smart. I say, I say, you know, make hay while the sun shines.
For me, being as a taxpayer, as many taxes as I do have to pay, I'd like to lower it, but I don't know that it would be in the best interest of all of you. But it would be in my best interest. And I, you know, I don't like giving my money away. I'd like to fix the country, but I don't have to pay for most of it. That's my, whatever you want.
Well, what I always look at.
I just think if 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 we roll it back, it's going to make the people that don't have the oil and stuff feel like we're trying to help them. See, that's my opinion.
Yeah, but in a couple of years, you're having to go back up because that oil is gone and everybody's going to be screaming at you.
I'm sure that it's a, it's a catch two.
I feel for you, but you got a chance to stay filled, to keep, to get four million dollars put in the debate.
Everybody happy.
And taxes will have to go back up because twenty-nine is this one. They will have to go back up.
I know that, I know that this is called default. That's what it's actually called if it's default and everything. But as like the judge said, I don't see it a cowardly way out because the decision that we make up here, it takes more guts than you can ever imagine just to come up and sit here every day and know that half of the people love you and half of the people hate you. Know that you have to walk out and people are going to give you ugly, dirty looks. You got to learn to live with those. I have, you know, but I just, you know, I blow it off. But I mean, there's nothing we do up here that's cowardly. Nothing, nothing. If it's a default, we go back in, whichever way we decide, whichever way we look at the people, at least folks, never think they were cowards because it takes more guts than you can ever imagine. The ones that have been sitting up here know what I mean. been sitting up here know what I mean. To sit up here, to come up here and sit up here, you know, y'all know, it takes guts, but we're not cowards. And anyway, no matter what decisions we make.
And if y'all need James' cell phone number, I'll give it to you.
It's on speed dial. It was put on the paper the last night.
I just got a little comment. I came into Florence County in 1999 as county commissioner. When I came in in Fall City, there were seven employees plus the commissioner. And I voted the people that I was going to work as a full-time employee for the county. But as the county, we went into the year of 2000, the county was short on money. The cuts come from the roads. The commissioner's cut so everything else could run. We were cutting, we were cutting, cutting, and we cut for years. And we went down to four employees in Fall City because we couldn't afford to have employees. We didn't have money for equipment and stuff. So this is opportunity for the county. I know the buildup. I've got to be, I'm like Frasier. I'm paying taxes too, and I'm paying a lot of my share of taxes. But we do need to start setting money aside for this county. I know Bob waving his head, "No."
I'm just saying, it's probably, I have a question about being illegal.
Oh, I understand that. I understand. I know where these guys are sitting at too because I've been down that ship. But we have to look for the future of the county and there's, there's that. Where are we going with our roads? I'm sitting there. And I want to start seeing where we can start building our roads up and put the county where it needs to be. Because I've seen what happened after the Nuremberg industry. There were roads that were paved in the county and never got repaved. And we're going to have some of that happen again. So we need to start putting some up so we can put our people back where we were at once before. And I'd like to see that happen.
And Jeff, if four million dollars were paved, how many miles of road?
Not a whole lot.
Ten feet. Tax law told me that's four hundred thousand miles a, four hundred thousand miles was the mile, the mile of road to end up.
Four million dollars, you're looking at two.
Ten.
No, you don't make it that far.
They tell me they're using four hundred thousand on these farm, the market.
Ten miles. Ten miles of road.
We don't set the tax rate to the twenty-fourth.
Or not.
We should have some feedback after this, I'm sure. So what are we doing there?
In regards to item number seven, I say take no action and calculate the tax rate at one-four-two, ten-to-one.
Is there no action?
There's no action, nothing.
The tax rate's not technically set to the twenty-fourth, am I correct?
That is correct, but to compare, to prepare a complete budget, I have to have an anticipated tax rate to estimate revenues, to make sure we have enough revenues to cover the expenditures.
Can I ask you a question, Lillana, just because I don't know? Can we choose to not act and default and make that as a commissioner's court decision? Is that legal?
You can ask your legal attorney over there.
If you go into default, it just automatically goes back to the four, right?
Brenda's going to say something.
They would have to vote to take no action, Bob.
There would be nothing.
They just said that. They just said that. It's the same, yeah, just saying.
We take no action.
You could just go ahead and set it at that.
No, you can't. It has to be default. It cannot, by taking no action, it will revert back to last year's tax rate.
Zero-zero-zero-zero-one below it.
Lillana will talk.
No action.
Okay, number eight is discuss, approve, disapprove, allocate fees and fines to the waystation to Roden Bridge on its peak.
Okay, then we need to spend money on our roads. And I want to know what has to be done to get the Roden Bridge, I mean, get the fines from the waystation, set an account for Roden Bridge, just by going to general funds, allocate that for Roden Bridge. Can that be done?
It can be set up or earmarked separately, but to do that, it will have to be denoted by the JPs when they turn in their reports what fines and fees come from waystation tickets to be able to set that money separate. Because right now, all their revenues just go into the general fund.
The trucking industry was doing a damage to our roads. And so I feel like if that, whatever money is generated from that, we should know how much it is and be designated for Roden Bridge. It should be higher, it should be designated.
And P, now, on the motorweight violations, which I think that's what that goes under, we do send fifty percent of that, what they collect, to the state. We do not keep all of that money.
Yes, I understand that. But the amount that we get is what I'm working, so.
Go ahead, Jake.
I signed up to speak on that particular subject. I think it should stay in the general fund. And if, every, each department has its budget. If Roden Bridge needs more money, come forward to the commissioner's court to get it. But if you're not going to do that, if you're going to give it to Roden Bridge, I think some of it should be allocated to the sheriff's department also. Personally, I think it should stay in the general fund. And then if it's needed, come forward to the commissioner's court and ask for it.
Thank you.
You can always that, that easily give it out to, don't have to do a determination of, of, what is it? It's a necessity, but I forgot. It's more than just a necessity. Grave necessity.
Why, you said that we keep fifty percent of the funds from the citations that DPS writes?
For motor, motorweight violations. A lot of the monies that they collect goes to the state, which is part of our quarterly reports. Some of it, we only keep ten percent of what they collect. Some of it, we only keep five percent. But the motorweight violation, I'm pretty sure it's fifty percent of what they collect goes back to the state. But you also need to remember, if there's more tickets being written, that's more work on the JPs and they're going to need more help. Or if you're going to start spreading their wealth, you just spread it to the JPs who, once that ticket's written, it's up to them to collect that money. I mean, they could write that ticket and if they don't follow through with warrants and payments or whatever, they could just...
And letters and blame.
And letters. I'm sorry, they heard it through you back there? I'm speaking for you.
That's okay. That's okay.
Judge, do you have any comments on that?
I, my opinion, why can't it just go into the general fund?
Just for clarification, we have our, in our tax rate, you have your MNO, which is maintenance operations. You have INS, interest and sinking, to cover our debt payments. And then you have a Roden Bridge special fund. Those are all specific dollar amounts. Of the MNO is the general fund, Roden Bridge fund, emergency management, county library, jury. There are several different sub-funds that come out of that MNO. Each year at tax time, a specific amount based on needs is allocated from the MNO to each of those sub-funds. So at that point in time, as Mr. Pierce said, if the Roden Bridge needs more money, that's when the assessment can be made, rather than just earmarking specifically the fines that we might generate from the waystation.
And how active is that waystation going to be? I mean, you don't want to depend on it bringing ten thousand dollars a year budgeted funds and then it's not that active from there. I mean, I see your side piece, but you can't, until it's really open for the first year, you don't know what, how active it's going to be and what exactly dollars it's going to bring in, too.
Well, I get questions about y'all spending this money and you're going to spend some money on Roden Bridge next year and how much is it going to make us? And so I thought if we had this, we would know how much it was. It'd be reported. That's what I'm looking at accountability.
And who's going to be working that area? The task force? And didn't the sheriff say that they're only going to be coming in once a month?
Yeah.
So, so how much will that generate? They're only going to be coming in once a month? And I believe the license and weight deputy was taken off of the sheriff's budget.
I think, I think what I feel crazy was Lieutenant Martinez is down here now and they gave us a license and weight guy. There used to not be one. Mr. Bowman or Deputy Officer Bowman's coming in.
Trooper.
Trooper Bowman, excuse me, whatever we are. And he's coming in and they offered to cross-train. That was my understanding. Sheriff Jalofka, he's not here. He said that they were going to cross-train the deputies. Mr. Martinez said he was going to assist him in that department. I know ACOG's offered assistance in that department also, but I know that's what Lieutenant Martinez told, Jalofka told me, that's what he told him. But he's not here, so I don't want to give you a third-party conversation. But that is what the sheriff told me. Well, he told us all, standing in here, not just me. Another one of those rewind moments. Somebody got their tape recorder?
Well, I just don't think it's fair for it to all go into Roden Bridge because there's a lot more people that were involved in that and that worked to make that a successful building. I mean, you got troopers writing tickets and certainly Roden Bridge is involved, but I don't think they deserve the whole portion of it. So I'd be in favor of what Judge Pierce said, just for the general fund and as it's needed by maybe the JPs, because I know they're extremely busy now. I mean, it's just...
I mean, not only the JPs, but the whole, the whole county in general, not just Roden Bridge.
That's okay by me. I just said, people asking me and I thought it was a way to get accountability and see how much goes and be reported, how much comes in from it, et cetera.
Is there another, can I ask, can I ask a question? Is there another way we can determine how much money the waystation is bringing in?
Yeah, through the violations on the JP's report, they'll be able to tell you.
Can y'all tell us, Daisy, can y'all separate it?
Where it goes through the overweight.
Yeah. Can y'all separate that for us and show us?
It's already separated.
It, we give you that report.
Yeah, it's shown on the report.
I just read what the county retained and what you sent me today.
I can show you.
But it, but...
Okay, so if someone wants, someone wants to know, we can get that information.
Yes, they come to my office or even the JP's office and might say, "There's another report."
When you do that report, is there a mechanism in there that does break that down and show us what you, the, the funds generated from? Yes. Okay.
All right. Something else you need to remember also is that county attorney's office takes a lot more work. The JP's have a lot more work. Just thought I'd throw that in.
So I mean, are we filing more cases than, than...
Sorry?
Are we filing more cases for the JP's?
Most of our cases are filed.
Just check.
File seventy-six at one time and JP quit. Paul said you were going to do one, two, three, four, all game cases.
So we're going to take no action?
Take no action.
Game.
Okay, number eleven is to adjourn.
No, it's not. Budget workshop.
I got excited. We're out of here. We're back. Number five is budget for a shot. Why are you laughing at me?
I was about to make the motion. I thought about it. We got number five.
Fiscal year 2013, which would be October, two thousand fifteen, October 2012 to September 2013.
Chef has come forward with a workable salary step that implements it based on, similar to the sheriff's department, six months, one year, three years, five years. He wants to present that to y'all and see if you will go with those changes for the budget.
If you look at the guy's salary, if you put them in the years where they've been here, that's what we want. We'd like the base cut.
For instance, Alberts, who's been here since 2002, he would start October 1st at the step five years as a heavy equipment operator at sixteen dollars an hour.
Jeffrey, who is the road permit station?
Allen. He's been at Frasier. He brings a lot of money and he's out there on the, on the, on the permitting. He goes and checks a lot of stuff for us, which has relieved me of a lot of the stuff. To do other stuff that I need to deal with all kinds of stuff, Allen's been helping us a lot on that. That position eventually will run out and it'll go back to you.
How much does it change your, how much does it change your salaries?
I don't know. We have...
I have not had the opportunity to run the numbers. I did not have the...
I brought that up for you Friday evening.
Well, and I didn't have all the employees listed at the time. I was missing a page.
This is what we're talking about. It has to be a step.
Yes. Because that gives definitive dates for steps within the year, not the wide variable of, they could get it at evaluation time, which could be March, which could be January, which could be July. There's not a way to accurately budget those dollars.
And then, and then you go look at Jesse, you know, you look at it like Chief said about Albert, the years he's been here. Then you look at Jesse Sandoval, he just started with us, kind of look at him for his rate. It's about as fair as fair we can get. And that splits up, you know, like where the years are going to go. And I don't know how much fairer we can get on that. Those three of us, we want to work on it. We work on it. Our, if we get it, we'll make this work.
I know one bone of contention will be, because it started the last time when we discussed salaries and did a bunch of changes, would be the administrative assistant. She would jump from ten-oh-four per hour to thirteen dollars per hour. Some of these other positions would be dollar fifty, two-fifty, three dollars. The biggest jump would be a four-dollar-an-hour change.
We're looking at, it'll be fair across the board. And that's one of the deals we're looking at. And then it'll give me a, when I hire somebody and I show them a step program, they don't work for, they got something to work for, the years to go.
There you go. Start somewhere.
Exactly.
And this is something that we've kind of thrown out in my office, is doing the same thing with all the county employees. Come January, I would like to form a committee where we have several people on it and start doing this step program. So come budget time, you're just going to have a piece of paper, this is what your salary's going to be. We're not going to beforehand trying to change salaries. Just do a step program, qualifications, things like that. If it's doable, if we all can sit down and be fair about it and think about it and put a lot of time and effort into it. And that is something that, because other counties do the step program also.
Every department makes it.
Yeah. Well, the state necessarily department is based on your years of service, what that position, not that person too, but that position, what responsibilities they have. Something that we, I would like to start.
It's going to be a money figure for the position, not the first candidate.
Well, and the thing... The state has one of those out there on the website.
Okay.
With job descriptions and stuff. It's extremely similar to what we do.
And some of the other counties have it too, because one, I both have gotten some information from this. And some of this came from Goliath County too, that I had shared with Roden Bridge on job descriptions for level one, level two, level three, years of service. It's something that can be done. It just has to, it's going to take time.
And something else that has to be considered if a step is implemented is, irregardless of your history in the outside world, when you join the government, you start at the start for that position. I don't care if you've got twenty years as a truck driver, you don't start at step five. You start at step one as a county employee.
And I think that's something that we need to beat out. And I'm definitely not picking on anybody here. I think we need to enhance our personnel manual a little bit to be more so people are clear on it and they don't come back and say, "Well, it's not in the policy manual."
And that's not in there on a daily... It started January, not in June.
Yeah, and, and I mean, buy Apple to help you with it or see if I can get policies from people. I mean, because we can all stick it on listserv and print it out. It's not that hard.
Just study every month or every two weeks and we sit down and we talk about it and, and make this to where we're not having to have this battle every year.
I believe this is going to help us get some people in who are employees. I think it'll help us. If Roden Bridge brings some people in because they'll want to work.
I hope so, because I sure do get tired of answering y'all's phone calls.
Me too.
My love to you and all, I don't want to answer your phone calls. Did you ever call the gentleman that I sent you the email on?
Take a moment, just a second. I think so. Well, I make a motion to accept the Roden Bridge offer as, as the step program. I second it. I second it.
All in favor of that? There's not really, I mean, it's just a budget workshop.
Well, I need it to be able to plug the numbers.
Yeah, we had, that's what we did last time, remember, we picked them out. We all said aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Guys, you know, I love y'all to death, and I, I've been there with y'all, well, not with y'all exactly, but I've been there knee deep in the, same thing y'all are doing, man. I'm going to have to oppose to this one, just because, not because I'm trying to be rude or anything, but I'm giving y'all an explanation why. You know, I'm not going to just say something and not put an explanation behind it. But because something is brought to us by, by a department, not just y'all's or, another department at the last minute, and it makes Commissioners' Court look really bad if we don't agree with it. You know, we don't like the heels all the time. And sometimes decisions are made and everything not to look back in public. I don't know why decisions are made, but usually, I mean, I've been here 12 years. It doesn't matter if I look bad or good in public. I try to look good, but I try to do what's best for the county and what I really believe deep down in my heart what is right. That's why I'm going against this, because I think this should have been brought up a long time ago. It should have been worked out a long time ago, and it should have brought, been brought to us a long time ago. That's the only reason that I'm disagreeing with it. No offense to y'all, guys. Could have been any department that did this to me, I would have told them the same thing. So we're still friends, we're still good, but you got my reason why I'm not agreeing with you.
Quarter one, motion carries. We're, we're all kind of concerned about this end of the, end of the, end of the day thing. And I, I understand.
I understand that.
I, I do, I understand you saying that, because it's like every time at the end, everybody comes into us, and it's our fault.
And if we don't do it, we look back. And I'm just tired. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of folks, guys, ladies, gentlemen, all the departments. I'm tired of it, you know?
And that's why we really need to sit down come January and get that done.
Exactly. You're, you're exactly right. I'm not tired.
Some of the departments did bring in those step programs, but they got ignored.
Right. I, I.
I feel for you. And I said nothing before the vote.
I understand that.
But it can happen.
And I didn't say that not all departments did it. You know, I just said that, I did not say that not all departments waited. All departments waited to the end. I just gave my reason why I didn't agree with you.
Okay. Next item, Alana.
That's all I have.
Then number 11 on the agenda is to adjourn.
We were going to talk about these metal detectors and plug in some of those in the budget, weren't we?
Well, when I talked to Sheriff Jalufka about that, he said you're going to have somebody also demand those metal detectors. Because every time somebody walks in and it deems who's going to go up there and stop them, and, and so you're talking about.
We're still going to have manpower.
Manpower.
I know we had talked about it.
You're right. We did talk about that.
Yeah. Like 10,000 pop for each one, but then you're talking about another 30,000 or 40,000 dollars a year per person for every door that you're going to cover.
And you know what we really need to do? What we really need to do is stop all the talk about, we need to stop all the talks about people allegedly walking through the door and saying, hey, I'm packing, or hey, you want some whiskey? Do you want to go have a beer? If that stuff would stop, I think life in Carnes County would be 10 times easier on everybody. But you work at a school, you work at a school, you used to work at a school, you've got kids coming in next door. I got 10-year-olds coming in next door. And anytime they hear somebody say that they're packing, that they want to go have whiskey, would you let your kids go to a school like that?
Well, that's unacceptable at a school.
There you go. There you go. We don't have zero tolerance here. My kids are hearing that stuff. And in my opinion, in my personal opinion, boot camp started again last week. And when my kids walk in that door, they should feel safer here than they should anywhere else.
This is considered a school.
This is considered a school. And let me tell you that insult to injury, I court order them to listen to this.
Is this not considered part of Carnes City ISD?
Yeah, it should be. I don't want it considered part of Carnes City ISD or what it's considered.
You're not allowed to.
But my kids should not have to hear about whiskey. My kids should not have to hear, do you want to go have a beer with me? My kids should not have to worry about anybody packing. My kids should not have to worry about stuff leaking out of their files. I should not be getting phone calls at night with concerns from parents over things like this. And in my opinion, my children, and I have some little ones in here, little ones. I have some that are not very old right now. And I don't, I, I, I've been, that little boy said he was 10 years old the other day. Said he was 10 years old. And I asked him, I said, little guy, how old are you? Because he was so little. I hadn't seen one here that little in a while. My kids shouldn't hear that. They shouldn't hear it at all. My kids should never be exposed to that. In my opinion, they are just as important as any kid in Kennedy, Fallsy, Rungy, but Carnes City. And I will not tolerate it. And that will stop somehow. And I will figure out a way to stop that, because I don't want to hear that talking here. And I don't want to hear parents call me and say, this might not be a safe environment. This should be the safest environment in the county. Schools should be safe. They're all safe zones, including this one. How many times do we as teachers preach, that's safe haven? You should be able to tell us anything, and we should be able to help you. But you know what? When I'm putting you in harm's way, I'm not helping you. And I will not tolerate that in this building any longer. It's a done deal.
So when that conversation goes on to the school, what happens to the person that's saying that?
Family are asked to leave if they do not, if they choose to not leave, then we, we call them.
Okay, there's your solution.
Well, maybe we could adopt.
Do we not have any time for this then?
They're on the door.
Or what have you, and run it up on the budget, adopt it if somebody violates it.
That's another, that's another personnel policy, and some other stuff that we need to look at. Okay, Google.
Well, you're going to, you're going to hire a male of your security, right? Shouldn't I take care of?
You know, we really don't want to spend taxpayer money like that. Can we just stop it? Can it just be stopped? I talked to Jalufka for a long time. Sheriff Jalufka, excuse me. Saturday, when all this was taking place, we had another incident taking place, and all this came up, and I, I gave some explanation as to why. Because, you know, I don't like to sit out and do this all, because it just shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen. Shouldn't be here. Shouldn't be having to ask for this stuff. Shouldn't happen. End of the story. And at, at the end of the day, if somebody says, well, you know, why aren't you the head of the county, and you can't stop it? When it comes to kids, I can stop anything because they're the most important thing we have. They're our future. So the next item on the agenda is to adjourn.
I'll make it.
A second. All in favor of that?